I'd like to call tonight's Board of Ed meeting back into session. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Serbeneck.
Here.
Ms. Weinstein.
Here.
Mr. Pos. Mr. Keller-Her.
Here.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Here.
Ms. Wengler.
Here.
Mrs. Mount.
Here.
A notice published on Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Habsburg Park Press. The Manchester Times was advised to specify the time and place of the meeting. A statement to this effect shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act commits exclusion of the public from meeting circumstances. Where this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. Now therefore, being resolved by the Manchester Times should board recommendations follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter is to be discussed as legal personnel negotiations. To anticipate these matters will be made public within sixty days. This resolution shall become effective immediately. Mount motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call tonight's Board of Ed meeting back into session. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Serbeneck.
Here.
Ms. Weinstein.
Here.
Mr. Pos.
Here.
Mr. Keller-Her.
Here.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Here.
Ms. Wengler.
Here.
Mrs. Mount.
Here. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of our beloved and faithful citizens of America. It's nice to see so many people here. Thank you for coming out tonight. I would like to express my sincere sympathies to the family, friends, loved ones of Mrs. Pat Ford, who worked at Whiting Elementary School. At our December Board of Ed meeting, I announced that some Board of Ed members would serve as liaisons for the CPAC, PTA, and Town Council. Based on legal guidance from our school board attorney, it has been decided that we will not move forward to have any Board of Ed members serve in this capacity. I want to clarify that although it was announced, none of our members have acted as liaisons to date and will not be taking these roles moving forward. Instead, we encourage these groups to take the opportunity to speak in public sessions about what is happening in their organizations, ensuring that their voices are still heard and their contributions are being recognized. One of the Board of Ed's goals is to receive training. We attended a training prior to tonight's meeting on restorative practices. I would like to thank the high school and the school administration team for a great job explaining restorative practices and telling us what you're doing in your schools to improve student relations. Congratulations to all the athletes who are breaking school records. Apparently this winter, there's a lot of them. We had a policy meeting on February twelfth to discuss policies eleven hundred, twenty-four nineteen, fifty-three oh six, eighty-six forty-two, eighty-five oh seven, and eighty-five hundred. We follow the guidance of Strauss Esme when reviewing and updating our policies. Looking ahead, we will be having our budgeting meeting on February twenty-seventh. Good luck to all the eighth graders as you get ready to move on to your next phase of your education and create your high school schedules. It was nice to see so many faces at last night's orientation. Seniors, enjoy and embrace these final moments of high school. Make many memories. I remember my one hundred nights dinner, which was many moons ago, Bon Lee, and I hope you have an amazing evening. It's one of the things that's coming up, which I'm sure you'll talk about. And in honor of Black History Month, I would like to leave you with some words of wisdom from Michael Jordan. Obstacles don't have to stop you. If you run into a wall, don't turn around and give up. Figure out how to climb it, go through it, or work around it. Mrs. Pedrosa, do you have the report?
I do. Good evening, everyone. As you'll notice, there are a few retirements on this night's agenda. I would like to say I am very happy, but also sad to see two of our staff members who will be retiring in June. Carolyn Weinberger has been with us for twenty-nine years. She is a fantastic gifted and talented STEM teacher, and she will be a tremendous loss to our district, but we wish her well in her retirement. Dina Foot, who is a therapist at, I think, three of our schools. She has been with us for seventeen years. I actually started at some time with Dina working here at the middle school. She is an exceptional therapist, and she will be a tremendous loss as well, but we wish them well in retirement. I would like to reiterate Mrs. Mount's sentiments. It is with great sadness that we come together to mourn the loss of our dear Pat Ford. Miss Ford was new to Whiting School, but not to the community at large. She was a longtime resident of Whiting with deep roots in this area through her residency and years of work with local preschools and children. She was proud of the work she did with Manchester's youngest learners and the ability to finish out her career at Whiting School. Please keep her, her family, your friends, students, and colleagues in your thoughts and prayers as they navigate through this very difficult time. I would like to thank our teams for coming to assist with this loss and this tragedy. School districts are prepared with protocols for handling the unfortunate loss of staff and students when they occur. Our administrative team organized a support team that was able to help us with the coping of this loss. Thank you for your support and thank you for your assistance. If you would please join me in a moment of silence in honor of this beautiful soul that we affectionately called Miss Pat. Thank you so much. The following are the recommendations of the superintendent for the kid report. There are cases eight through twelve of the high school, Ridgeway Elementary School, cases two through three, and Whiting Elementary School, case number eight. Yes, we'd like to bring up the students from PR Leadership.
The students from PR Leadership, if you can come up for your presentation.
So I'd like to give a little background to everyone here this evening. These wonderful students actually presented to both Mr. Adams, myself, and Ms. Silvestri the idea of creating a candlelight vigil in honor of some of our fallen hawks. This is a presentation for information and to let people know about this vigil that will be conducted. They did a tremendous job. You guys look fantastic tonight, and we are glad you could join us, so thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Jones, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Before I get started, I would like the rest of my classmates to introduce themselves.
My name is Jamie Colback.
My name is Shayra Alex.
Taylor Hendy.
I'm Eric Bier.
I'm Shelly Schwartz.
I'm Kim.
I'm Sarah.
And we are here to inform you about an event that has been planned at the high school. Now, you may be wondering who we are. We are a selected few group of students in this Pedrosa's Leadership Seminar class. This class is student-based. This class is student-based, so this class helps enhance and exercise our leadership skills. As a class, we work on several projects that benefit the community and the high school, such as helping answer hunger, reduce student orientation, trigger trunk, and currently the Memorial Garden Vigil. To now let you know a bit about who we are, if you want a little bit more about the Memorial Garden. It was created in two thousand twelve by the class of twenty fourteen, and the honors of fallen hawks are our school. The fallen hawks are students or staff members that passed during their time at the high school, and leadership became involved in twenty twenty with the restoration and reopening of the garden. And ever since then, we've been maintaining and improving it annually. So, as you can see, there are some visuals of the garden. I'd like to start with the one that you see at your top left corner. This is a bulletin board right outside of the garden, and on it are all of the fallen hawks. That's just there to honor them and remember them. As you can see, there's things like stockings on the board, and that's because, no matter what the season is, whether it's Christmas season or Halloween, we try to be festive, so even though they're not here with us physically, they can still celebrate with us spiritually.
We have a couple more pictures that I need to show on the slideshow. But while there, I want to talk a bit more about the history of the garden and why events like these are so important to us. So as you heard, the garden was first created by the class of twenty fourteen and twenty twelve, but shortly after they graduated, the doors were forced to be closed due to security and safety reasons, and this left the garden to be sort of neglected for a little while. And students and faculty noticed this, and they wanted to open up the doors, but of course, there was a lot that went into that. And so it was left to someone to sort of take up the responsibility to keep this place alive. And that's what the Leadership Class of twenty twenty hoped to do, and they did achieve it after a lot of work and a lot of research that went into making this happen. And so ever since, Leadership Class has done what they can to not only keep these doors open, but to talk about it, because half the responsibility is just opening doors and maintaining it, but the other half is talking and educating those on the purpose of the garden. Because I'll admit, last year was for the graduation, it was forced to be indoors due to certain circumstances. And before then, I hadn't known about what the garden was. I knew it was there, but the purpose and sort of who it was representing, I hadn't known about. And to see the graduation happen indoors and all the students who were walking through when it was decorated, you know, it allowed a lot of people the opportunity to learn about it and to talk about it. And these sort of events inspire us and give us the passion to have events like these where more people are invited into the space to sort of learn about it and keep the memory alive. So the Memorial Garden is a very sacred space, and we keep it very active. And as part of last year's Leadership Class, we hope to manifest their plan into reality. Every Leadership Class likes to have something they leave behind for the next year, and they hope to have a candlelight vigil. And we hope to bring this community together and honor the students and staff that have passed during their time at MTHS. We hope in doing so, we will provide music, refreshments, that will be provided by us, but we are looking for monetary donations or anything that the community can provide. We hope to provide a butterfly release, which is supposed to symbolize this transition into life and, you know, a celebration of life instead of, you know, the grief. You know, it's hard to deal with, but we hope this candlelight vigil and butterfly release will help, you know, with the never-ending cycle that is grief and show the families that we are there for them and we are still supporting them years later. We hope through tributes and memories of our fallen hawks, we'll also be able to honor them and remember those even though, you know, some of us haven't really met them, so we are able to honor them in spirit. And this event will be taking place at June eighth, at six thirty P M, in the MTHS Memorial Garden. It will carry over into the school library, and any accommodations with rain will be taken over into the library. So what do we need from the community? This is directed towards many businesses that are local. First of all, monetary donations that would be used for the butterflies, for the butterfly release, candles, general supplies, even food. Another thing is food and beverage donations. Local restaurants and businesses can give us food or perhaps gift card donations to get the food. The other thing is landscaping. What that entails is perhaps any landscapers out there can come and maybe mix our weeds. Our bushes currently have disease. We really want to keep our garden, you know, as nice as possible to respect those who it's honoring. We would also like rocks for the pond, maybe. Also, our gazebo is currently not, I mean, it's functional, but it's a little ruined. Sorry. And the last thing is from the community, we just want to support. Maybe it's, you know, some kind words, posts, something like that, just to get the word out, really. I think that, you know, this kind of event is important, not just to us, but I feel like it's important to you guys, and we really want to drive the point home that Manchester Township High School does not just care about the hawks that are going there, but also the hawks that are not currently going there, the hawks that this garden is celebrating. So. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. So when people want to make donations, like I want to donate a few cases of water, who should we reach out to so that way you know what's coming your way?
That would probably be, we're going to have something posted that like-
Down the website.
A little bit more, and so you can reach out through email or their-
So surely activists?
Yeah.
Sometime during this week, there's a website.
There's going to be a post.
And people form, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just want everybody to get the same message.
Anything else?
I just want to commend you. You guys did a tremendous job. You were very detailed, the way you planned it. And really, the website, I think, will allow you to be able to get a little bit more of what you're looking for to make that evening so special. I will be sending to Mrs. Pedrosa hawk pins for all of you, but a wonderful job tonight. Thank you so much. You should be so proud. It's not an easy group for me to follow. But certainly, this is the highlight of our night, which is to recognize our students. So we'll begin with the students that are involved in broadcast news. This is Team One, and I believe we have a slide for them. There we go. Kenny, Emma, Nicole, Haley, Gavin, Manny, Flores, Savannah, Aubrianna, and they are accompanied by their broadcast news teacher, Mrs. Frine. Me, Kenny, Emma, Haley, Gavin, Manny, Savannah, Nicole, and Aubrianna. These fifth grade dragons are responsible for the MTS live news broadcast each morning. And let me just tell you, they are very, very serious, because I've been on this broadcast, and they give you all the cues and prompt you and do a great job interviewing. They work hard during recess, after school, and even on the weekends to make sure MTS has top-quality daily newscast. Thank you for your hard work and thank you for your dedication. Grab, and you grab it. Haley?
Emma.
Great job. Thank you, guys. Our next students are representing Ridgeway Elementary School. We have Freddie, Elena, Eros, Jose, Damian, and Kendi, who met with Pomtonian Cafeteria staff to provide quality feedback regarding the meals served to our Ridgeway students. I think his assurance can be recorded.
Who's that?
Their feedback provides valuable insights to make modifications in many situations to better serve the students and the students' schools.
Jose? And these two are here too.
Damian will get your attention.
All right, good job, Damian. Thank you.
Our next group of students are representing Whiting Elementary School. Thank you for our officers, Shaylin, Emma, and the junior impact students who decided to conduct a school-wide Super Bowl Challenge. Students donated over four hundred cans of soup for our local food bank. That's quite a lot. Students gave a can to guess the winner. The winning number of cans predicted and the winner were the cheats. In addition, our students also participated in the district-wide cereal awards and assisted with prepping them at the barn. Congratulations and thank you so much, guys. You know, Mrs. Golic, that was a lot of work with the cereal drive. And we are very grateful to them. Great job, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Our next smiling face is representing Regional Base School, and this lovely beauty is Sandrea. Sandrea is a friendly young lady with the most beautiful and contagious smile. Woo-hoo, you guys. She loves you, yeah, because all her lyrics are songs from Disney World. Sandrea has a great sense of humor, and she always reminds us of the schedule by saying, "It's time for lunch." "Mr. George, you got that? It's time for lunch. Time to go home." Sandrea makes sure that we can hear her clear request for a cookie, which is her reward at the end of each day for good behavior. Congratulations, gorgeous. Thank you so much. Look at that smile. Our next student is representing our middle school. And we have with us Jose. Is Jose here this evening? I'm still going to read that, Jose. Jose would like, we would like to recognize Jose Serrano Ramirez for his achievements as a middle school student. He's a student who always does his best with forth effort and is motivated to do well. He's kind, he's caring, and he gets along with his peers. Jose has made significant progress academically this year, and he's an eighth grader true leader. Our class runs Mustang Joe's, a school-wide coffee cart, and Jose is a leader while making one-two made. He makes treats in the class to sell on the coffee cart. He's a top employee while working for the coffee cart, and he's an absolute pleasure to be around. Congratulations to Jose. Our next two students are student athletes from the middle school, and I think I saw them here. Is Michael here and Kristen? Come on up. We are extremely proud to have Michael and Kristen represent MTMS as our student athletes for the month of February. Give them a nice big round of applause. What I love about them is they are both great representations of what it means to be a student athlete. They're both eighth grade leaders of our wrestling, cross-country, and soccer basketball teams, and respectfully work just as hard in their classroom as they do in the athletic arena. They serve as an excellent example of our young student athletes. Congratulations, guys. We're going to continue our celebrations with the high school. And here's one here, Diana, Daniella, Sharon, Kelly, and Mayette. Come on down. In recognition of the outstanding efforts of the MTHS Interact Club members, their recent initiative to organize a cereal drive benefiting the J.E. Palmer Memorial Food Territory in Whiting exemplifies their commitment to serving the community and making a positive impact. The cereal drive was a district-wide event with students from each school coming together to collect cereal donations. Through their hard work and dedication, the students collected an impressive nine hundred boxes of cereal. And if you know, that's pretty impressive, especially since a box of new cereal used to cost maybe two dollars when I was a kid, and dating myself. That is a tremendous effort and really wonderful piece. We, I'd also like to thank Mrs. Golic. She helped actually coordinate that, and tremendous job. I saw what you did last week in the road ring breakfast and bringing all the kids together. Your work is truly remarkable. Thank you so much. Thank you, Golic. So I got a little lesson from Mr. Lister today because I wasn't sure what IM stand for. Does anybody know what IM is in swimming? I hear it, individual medley. That's exactly right. So I'd like to bring up Alexandra and Andrew. Are they here this evening? And Stacy, come on up. Just keep swimming is their message. So Alex is a junior member of the Hawks Swim Team, a three-year varsity letter winner and is double A school record holder in several events. Lexie has the flag record with a time of one minute fifty-nine. She's a member of the two hundred medley relay and the two hundred three relay that both broke longstanding school county records for the past year. Lexie broke her own record this season in the two hundred IM with a time of two minutes fifteen seconds. Lexie has placed in top eight in shores and the top four in the county for the past two seasons as one of the top swimmers in the shore. Way to go, Lexie. And I have to read that all because you have accomplished a lot, girl, so congratulations. But not to be surpassed here, Andrew has done a great job too. As a freshman, he's an extraordinary swim season. In his first season as the Hawks, he broke several individual and relay records. Andrew broke the two hundred IM record with a time of two one fifty-five, the one hundred breast record with a time of fifty-nine ninety-two, and then he broke the fifty-three record from nineteen ninety-nine with a time of twenty-two point fifty-one. Whoosh, that's amazing. Right? Is that amazing? Smart. Yes, then give him a round of applause. Andrew also was a member of record-breaking relays, the two hundred medley relay and the four hundred free. Andrew placed in the two hundred IM and third in the one hundred breast at Shore Conference this evening. Andrew has three more years to continue, so he's setting the bar very high for future swimmers. Way to go, Andrew. And thank you, Mr. Lister, for perfecting the student. My pleasure. I do also want to bring up, I was asked to speak a little bit about the PTA. The PTA, actually, I believe Mrs. Lacy is here this evening, will leave this up for you. But we're asking you to please mark your calendars for May eleventh at the Blue Claws. We will be hosting an event there. I am told that I will be pitching and throwing. The first pitch with the principals will actually sell the most tickets. I'm training right now, so we'll see how it goes. I'm going to be a good sport, so not to worry. And then the other thing I just want to remind you all is that we do have our PTA meeting tomorrow evening. So thank you so much for coming, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Lacy.
Actually, our military ambassador's not here, so thank you, Ms. Jamie Colback, for joining us. If you could give us a report for student government?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Colback, and I am the junior class president at Manchester Township High School. The reason that I'm speaking here before you tonight is to provide the board with some important information regarding activities and events that have occurred or are being planned at the high school since the last meeting. Here are some of the events that Student Council is working on. We're working on the summer special dance, which is Sunday, June second, and it's a day of fun where younger students can participate in dancing, bass singing, and more. And every year, it's a beautiful thing. I went last year. It was literally incredible, so. And then the senior class of twenty-four is working on senior gifts for graduation. Their prom, which is May seventeenth at the mainland, is booked. And I'm possibly looking at a student for a staff basketball game. And also for the hundred and ninety dinner. It's on March twelfth, so, and that's also really fun. So I'm not a senior yet, but I'm looking forward to it for next year. And for our junior class of twenty-two-five, we're currently running a blanket fundraiser. So if you can pull easily or if you want a soft cozy blanket, I highly recommend purchasing one. Orders are new Friday. And our prom date is May thirty-first, and details are in the works, but the date is set in stone. Our sophomore class is working on a possible food fundraiser, and our freshman class is working on a softball tournament during spring and possibly a movie night, but they're still working on that. Thank you for allowing me to represent the MTHS Student Government at the board meeting this evening. I am honored to stand before you all and share the past and future ongoings involving SGA at the high school. Thank you again, and have a great night.
Mr. Lorenson, do you have a report for us?
A couple of quick things. These are primarily on the agenda. Providing full explanation. We have a resolution on the agenda to, essentially, we're agreeing to a resolution in the town- that the township passed to waive a $32,000 water sewer bill. When COVID hit, I guess they stopped, they stopped taking readings on one of our water meters and we received a bill of $30,000 this, this year. And, uh, as we were talking with, talking with the township, one of the things they had asked us to do is if we could put a well in instead of using portable city water, they would agree to waive the $32,000 because they do have genuine concerns with all the new buildings that are coming, that are, all the building going on in town about pouring water. So we are gonna put a well in at Ridgeway, which will essentially supply our irrigation. That will be done through a grant, uh, so it's not gonna come out of our budget. Uh, and in, in return, they will drop that charge. Uh, there's a capital needs grant on the agenda. This is kind of just what I was talking about. Uh, this is the second or third round of, of funding that, that's being provided. Uh, but it does have to be used for capital needs. Uh, so what we are gonna do is we are gonna utilize these funds to install the well that I was just talking about. And then we're also gonna replace some, uh, older inefficient hot water heaters. Uh, the district did qualify for a preschool facilities expansion grant in amount of 1.0, almost 1.5 million. These funds would be used to support a potential addition at Ridgeway Elementary, a three-classroom addition at Ridgeway Elementary with some office space and some conference area. The district would be responsible for coming up with the local share, which right now is estimated to be around $2 million. Uh, this, this funding cannot come out of our local budget because the PEA is its own separate entity. So we are looking at some ways that we could potentially fund this project. Um, if we can't do it, then we, we would wind up returning, returning the money. Uh, there's a few changers on the agenda. Our, our HVAC project, uh, which was funded through our, through Esser, uh, is kind of winding down. Our windows project at Ridgeway is completed. Uh, our HVAC project is near completion, but we have a couple of change orders, uh, just to get, get, get us over the finish line includes installing some additional electrical, some additional painting, and, uh, some additional piping due to unforeseen circumstances when they were doing the work. Uh, they couldn't route, route, route some of the gas piping the way they wanted to. Uh, and then my last one is we have two tuition contracts, sorry, my second last one. We have two tuition contracts on the agenda for special education students that we are receiving from other school districts. Uh, one's coming from LaVele and one's coming from Lakewood. They do attend programs here, so we do charge them tuition. So those contracts, um, actually, I'm sorry, those contracts are not on the agenda tonight. They're already approved, but I wanted to discuss them because it kind of left me a little bit. Uh, so they, so we will be moving forward with that. And there is a potential for another kid from our free world that could be attending one of our programs. So if that's the case, we will charge them tuition. And then lastly, uh, we will be holding a public budget meeting next Tuesday, February 27th. Uh, it'll start at 5:00 PM. Again, this is a high, 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 high light of the budget. Um, we're, you know, I, I will discuss the information that I, that I have now that I can discuss. Uh, the governor's address is that same day. Uh, so he will, you know, he will discuss what's gonna happen in schools for the upcoming budget cycle. However, he does not, he will not get our state aid numbers probably for two days. February 29th, March 1st, somewhere around there, we'll get our state aid numbers. And then we can start fine-tuning the budget where we have to. Uh, we are in our last year of, of Sanibel S2. So on paper, we are supposed to see a state aid deduction. However, the shift in enrollment in the district with increased special ed numbers, increased ESL, increased free reduced lunch, I think could potentially offset a state aid loss similar to what it did last year. So that's what I'm hoping. Uh, but we don't have any other information beyond that. Uh, and then when we are here for our March Board meeting, we will be, I will be asking the board to approve the tendered budget to be submitted to the county office. And essentially, that will be our budget that I will present in April or May when we have the public hearing on the full.
At this time, we would like to invite any residents, um, to comment on agenda items only. If you're interested, please come to the microphone. Do we have any board member reports? Do we have any old business or correspondence?
No business, no correspondence.
Okay, now to the agenda, section one, A, new business, numbers one through four. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, before we vote, I am gonna read in one additional resolution. This will be number five. Uh, this is, so the resolution will read, uh, resolution uphold decision made on hip keys, WES 01. That would be number five. So if you are voting to uphold, it would be yes. If you're voting not to uphold, it would be no. I'm sorry.
We're gonna, uh, can I get another motion since we now have another number?
Motion.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Uh, yes, only one through four, no one.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. Next, section B through D. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, for number two, I have one concern about putting a well at Ridgeway after all of the water problems we've had in Manchester and it being across from the landfill.
Yeah, I mean.
Have we looked at that, dug up water?
Well, they will, yes, of course. That, that'll all be part of it because they will do soil testing and all that stuff to make sure that, you know, it's, uh, it's gonna be not portable, so it's not gonna be drinking water. It's gonna be water in the fields and things like that, but they will be looking.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This would, no, 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 this would not be drinking water. This would strictly be for, for irrigation.
Okay.
Good question. Any other discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. Section two, administrative, numbers one through seven, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. Okay, personnel, numbers one to 31, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? I would just like to congratulate all those retiring. Hope you enjoy your future retirement. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes, uh, in number 30, yes, all of them except for Nathaniel Keller, I'm gonna abstain.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. Okay, student personnel, numbers one and two, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. Special services, numbers one to three, can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just provide some additional information. Uh, number two, these are not new students. These are students that are transferring from one placement to another, which I was thankful for.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. Athletics, numbers one and two, can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Just want to wish all the spring athletes a great spring season. Good luck to you all. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. Section three, finance, uh, numbers one through five, can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes. At this time, we would like to invite anybody from the public to come up to make, um, any comments. Um, at this time, we are going to have to go into an executive session, number two.
Where a section named the article meaning Zach, against exclusion of the public under certain circumstances, whereas this public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the interest of the county board of education as follows. Public shall be excluded from discussion here and after specified subject matters. General interest in subject matters to discuss the legal personnel negotiations. To anticipate these matters will be made public in six weeks. This resolution shall become effective immediately. Uh, we do need to go into a second, uh, closed session to discuss some things we couldn't get through the first one. Uh, when we come out back in public, action may be taken, just so you guys are aware. Kind of motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, it's, it's different for. Depends on the position.
And the contract, right? Confuse me because your stuff's over here.
I'd like to make a motion to resume tonight's board event meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin, I'm here. Ms. Weinstein.
I'm here.
Mr. Pos.
Here.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Here.
Mrs. Wengler.
Here.
Mrs. Mount.
Here.
Okay, before we close the meeting, we do have one resolution to read in. Uh, the resolution will read in as follows. Resolution to authorize a letter dissent to law enforcement agency regarding conduct of employee number 9213. Kind of motion, please? Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Serious? All right.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Serbin.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Abstain.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
And Mrs.
Yes. This time, I'd like to make a motion to, during tonight's meeting, can I get a motion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.